I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Montague County Board of Education. It is July 22nd, 5:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just the basic, you know, recognition here, right, right here.
Sorry, just checking notes. Okay, first off, we have something we always enjoy doing, is recognitions. And what we have here is Mr. Neil King of Suncrest Middle School, named the 2025 West Virginia Band Director of the Year. With 29 years of dedication, including 25 in Montague County, Mr. King has inspired generations of musicians under his leadership. He's seen seven state champion honor bands, including Suncrest Middle School Jazz Ensemble. Earning the top spot this year as the 2025 West Virginia State Champion Jazz Band. So congratulations, Mr. King, if you would come up. I've known him for many, many years, but I'm going to defer to present you with the plaque. This is called the grip and grin, as Judy used to say. Oh, yes, yes.
Introduce, Mr. King, introduce.
Oh, this is my wife, Karina King. She is a music education specialist also in Marion County.
Taught him everything he knows. And don't run off, you're next up on the program. I will say that all over the place, I see him performing and playing and just loves the kids and you do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
And you're well deserving of it, so appreciate that all you do. I mean, it's one of those, if you hear music, you turn around, he's probably in that group somewhere. So with that said, we have music programs with the presenter, Mr. Neil King.
Thank you all. It's great to be here this evening, or late afternoon, rather. It's a pleasure to stand before you to highlight one of our most valuable assets of Montague County schools, our outstanding instrumental music programs, and to recognize the vital role our school system and leaders, along with our county levy, have played in their success. Our band and orchestra programs are not only thriving, they are among the most visible and powerful public relations tools our schools have. At every school in Montague County, instrumental music programs represent the largest student organizations. That's not only a fun fact, it's a testament to the culture of excellence and support that our students, families, and administrators have brought together. It's truly a community effort. Our students don't just rehearse and perform within school walls. They represent Montague County with pride in five or more community parades annually, at our home football games, some away games, civic events, dedications, annual winter and spring concerts, state adjudicated festivals, and even national level performances. You'll find them on stages and in the streets, serving as ambassadors for our schools and for the values of dedication, teamwork, and pride. The excellence of these programs is recognized at the highest level. University High School's wind ensemble and orchestra have been honored in recent years as a West Virginia State Champion Honor Group. Suncrest Middle School has earned that same distinction for both concert and jazz multiple times. Morgantown High School's percussion ensemble has been selected as a state honor group as well, displaying basically their artistic excellence and their precision. We are also proud to spotlight our strings programs, which is one of the largest in the state. With dedicated professionals leading the way, our orchestra programs continue to grow and inspire. The success of the University High School String Orchestra, which has been named a state honors ensemble twice in recent years, speaks volumes about the strength, talent, and commitment of our string students and directors alike. A shining example of collaboration in the arts can be found at Morgantown High School, where the choir, orchestra, and band program come together annually to present a veterans tribute. This moving event is not only a musical showcase, but also a deeply, deeply meaningful expression of gratitude that is extremely well received by our community. And let's not forget this remarkable statistic. Over 30% of the 2025 West Virginia All-State Band was comprised of students from Montague County alone. That's not just impressive, that's leadership and excellence on display at the state level. None of this happens by accident. Our instrumental music professionals are among the most hardworking, passionate, and dedicated educators in the state. The hours they invest before and after school, on weekends, on buses, in rehearsals, and in performance spaces would be hard to tally, and yet they do so with joy, pride, all because they believe in our students here in our county. But that belief is matched by unwavering support from our county leadership and our community through our levy support. Because of that support for scheduling, for resources, for visibility, we are able to provide opportunities to change lives and elevate schools. Importantly, the levy has also supported ongoing staff development, allowing our music professionals to grow in their craft, remain current in practices, and bring the very best to our students each and every day. A strong music program strengthens a school's identity, unites communities, and gives students a place to belong, to lead, and to shine. We are proud of what we build here in Montague County, and with continued levy support, the best is still ahead. We have a brief video presentation for you to watch.
Before we back on, Dan.
Just again, one footnote here to thank, of course, Mr. King for his honor this evening, but also he serves as the facilitator for our music programs. So when he's speaking here, he's speaking here on behalf of his colleagues, which he represents quite well, and he's a conduit to this office in the music area, just like we have someone in the art and someone in the physical education, someone in library. So we have people that step up to these positions. Neil has done that admirably for years, and again, thank you for sharing all of that with us.
Thank you. One thing about the music, they can play it their whole lives.
That's right.
You can be a quarterback, but you get hurt and you're done quarterbacking soon. Thank you for that. Okay, Chris, I assume you have no delegations? So we'll move on to awarding of contracts.
Yes, and the contract we have is actually several contracts. This is through IDEA, and it is for the medical services that, again, we provide. And all of them are achieved through a bid process that goes through Nicole's office. And as you can see, there's a breakdown of the four different contracts that we engage in to provide services to our students. So I'm recommending that we accept those contracts.
Okay, we'll do them individually?
Yes, the first one is for occupational therapy, and that goes to best life therapies. I recommend that.
Okay, is that the second one or the first one?
Did I miss the first one? I, I'm sorry, both of them are best life therapy, but you're correct. The first one is speech and language, so we need to take that, yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item B.
The second recommendation again is to best life therapy, and it is for occupational therapy.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, it's moved in seconds. Is there any conversation, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
The next one is for, again, services for the vision and students in need of that, and that is awarded to WVU Medicine I Institute.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
And the final one is for sign language interpreting services, and that is awarded to Americas.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Now we move on to HVAC maintenance.
Yes, and this contract, again, we look at every year. This year, we did change the scope of the contract and focused heavily on preventative maintenance in the HVAC world. So again, there were bids taken on the, what we placed out there. And Nicole, do you want to just talk about that?
Yes, so the bid was structured a little bit differently than what we have done in the past. We had a corrective action, or, I'm sorry, we had the controls. And then we have our regular repair and maintenance, but then we also have a preventative maintenance. So what each of the vendors were to supply us with is how much that would cost. Now, for this one, we do have, we will be awarding a primary contract to, but if this vendor fails, then it would be awarded then to the secondary contract, H.E. Newman. So we do have a backup if we run into any issues where they can't service us within the timeframe that was stipulated in the bid.
This covers the filters and all that.
Yes, that's under the preventative maintenance.
It sounds cheap, but it isn't. Not the filters.
So I'm recommending that we go with the low bidder in this case. And Nicole, the name of that is Alpha.
And that would be Alpha Energy Solutions at $221,108. And then the secondary contract would be to H.E. Newman for $327,860.
How does that work if?
Wait a minute, let's, let's get to motion and then we can open up your question. So entertain a motion?
Yes, I.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
How does that work if, like, you're in the middle of the school year and one falls through, and then you have a secondary contract? Is it prorated?
That's a very good question. So for the preventative maintenance, it's billed on a quarterly basis. And then for the repair and maintenance and the controls, it is bid at an hourly basis. So if we do have to switch, then we would go to H.E. Newman's hourly and then their preventative maintenance, wherever we would fall in that quarter.
So Nicole, what, what, what's the watch out with Alpha Energy? Why are we thinking they won't be able to, just because they're so cheap and?
No, we just wanted to do it differently because in the past, we have had some problems with vendors that we've used, not meeting the specs of the bids. And this allows us to, if they do not perform under the contract, we don't have to rebid it out.
Very good. How's one get on, this is maybe a silly question, but how do you get on the bid tab?
We send out notices to.
A list of companies. So how do you get on that list? People call us and ask to be on the list?
Yeah, so we're required to publicize it, so we put it in the newspaper, we run it for three days. And then anyone that we know that may be interested in the bid packet, once it's advertised, we will then send it to those vendors. And then with this, they had to attend a pre-bid meeting. In order to bid, they had to be present at the pre-bid.
And some companies choose not to make a bid after attending the pre-bid, which happens.
And that was the case with the two of them.
And it seems to happen quite often, yes.
And that's normal, because you're looking at the bid in the newspaper, and you think it's one thing, but then when you get, find out what it actually entails.
When you actually get the actual document.
Okay, that's beyond our scope.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Banking services.
Yes, and again, we are re-upping our banking services, which is very complicated and very involved. Again, this is a huge business operation, and thankfully Nicole and her team look diligently at making everything work, and we have to have a good partner in the banking world.
Yes.
Because people want to be paid.
Yes, that is correct.
So we do have a recommendation for the bank bid, and Nicole, would you like to...
And that would be NDB Bank.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Okay, I'll do the motion stuff, then we can discuss. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, now we can talk. You ever go say something?
Well, I'm sorry, no.
No, you're okay. Okay, anybody have any questions?
Who are we currently banking with now?
We are currently with NDB Bank.
Okay, so there wouldn't be a transition?
That is correct.
And that's in some of the comments where there is a risk to switching, so the recommendation wasn't just based solely on...
No, what we looked at, we looked at the cost of switching banks because we would have to maintain numerous bank accounts because we have outstanding checks. We also are, we have our summer pays that are still being processed that would be ran through NDB Bank. We would have to switch all of our federal taxes, any of the federal and grant platforms that we have. And we also looked at customer service. Anytime that we have ever had a problem, NDB has always been there. They're very receptive to our needs. And then the, we currently have six boards, or, I'm sorry, six schools that bank with NDB, and they are getting around $50,000 in interest. So those were some of the factors that we looked at.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Embedded professional development.
Yes, this is through Title I, which is a federal supplement here again, and we are recommending what this contract will do. Again, is, I think there are 10 visits here included for the schools, and it is training on professional learning communities. And we haven't done anything like this for probably 15 years, and teachers were requesting this. Again, we're fortunate that our title program can build this into their budget, and so this is what that is about, in case there's questions there. So will be targeted to specific schools that receive title funding, Title I funding.
Will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question. The bid is for three years.
Yes.
And so as we are anticipating changes at the federal level with Title I, is it a smart move to sign, or I know this is just a bid, but to anticipate a three-year contract?
Well, all of these can be separable after a year.
Okay.
Yes, so that is our safety place because you're exactly right. We have no idea what may be happening.
Because I thought three years, is that what's going to happen in three years?
Who knows, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, sir.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Now the exciting stuff.
Yes.
M-Tech addition.
Well, this really is very exciting here. And again, the new build will include our innovation area and also the middle school programming that we're going to be able to offer. So that is huge for M-Tech, and I know they're really excited about it, and so are we. So that's going to really allow us to expand programming here. I know we already did this at the last meeting, but this, I understand that correctly, is the awarding of the actual contract.
This, yeah, so this is awarding of the, we'll be bringing the contract back to you after the SBA gives its approval.
They have, it has to have, so...
SBA approval.
Pending SBA approval. I want to say that on the record.
And then the next meeting will actually bring the contract documents back.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Anybody have any questions, follow-ups? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Great, that was a good one. Hey, next we have new contracts.
Yes, yes, and this is, this is something that we don't ordinarily do, but as you know, we are doing a major kitchen renovation at Morgantown High, again, in conjunction with SBA funding that we received and local funding. So for the first semester, basically, from the beginning of school until December, we, our kitchen facilities will not be usable. So what we refer to it as, they're renovating this in two phases. This first phase is what I call the back of the house, so it may not be visible when we pick up in January, but it will be very visible to the cooks that work there and the employees, and the ability to get food into the actual cafeteria without having to unload it and then try to make ways around that difficult area that is currently their kitchen working area. So this will get new equipment in that area. It will utilize the space more effectively for the cooks to actually prepare the food, and that is due to be completed here by January. So, but until that time, we will not be preparing food on-site. So fortunately, we have, and our Director of Nutrition has looked at several opportunities, and so, again, working here, and Jennifer worked with the contract with Chico Enterprises, so we are leasing their kitchen for food preparation. And then, again, that's really not very far away from Morgantown High, a very short distance. Our folks will be transporting that food, so our cooks will be actually working, some of them will be working at the site at Chico's, and the others will be at the building, but to make sure that food then is available for our students. So Mr. Keel has worked on a set menu, which we'll be announcing here soon, so it will be, you know, we're going to eat something on Monday, every Monday of that time that we're there. So it will limit somewhat some of the opportunities for prepared food that we see on the regular menus for the other students throughout the district. But again, we're fortunate to have this, this space, which is a commercial space, to utilize and partner with so that we can get food to our students at Morgantown High for that first semester.
Okay, good. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I have a few questions. Am I right that the building is empty right now? No one's using it?
Correct.
So have we inspected the facility and the, I can't think of the word for it, the stove and the oven, things like that?
Absolutely, and that's an excellent...
The appliances, there we go.
Well, it's an excellent, because it is empty. But we are required, the health department will be doing an inspection, our folks will be doing an inspection, and we've already done a lot of that ahead of time. Now, the health department hasn't been in, they will be in when the food preparation is going. But as far, it's a very workable kitchen, but it, you're right, we're fortunate that it's not being used right now. And available, and that they were willing to partner with us. But those are all absolutely questions that we have to, we need to answer for our own accountability.
Okay. And maybe Nicole can answer this. The part about the security deposit in the contract is a little confusing.
Do you want to answer that? Do you want to go ahead and answer that? So instead of, we normally don't find ourselves in situations like this where we're leasing property. So to provide the owner with some surety on this, we, and although Donna has said this, we anticipate this going only until January, we entered into, basically till the end of the school year lease because in the event it's delayed, we don't want to be scrambling to find someplace if they have another tenant lined up right after our lease ends. But it also says that we can discontinue the lease with 60-day notice.
That's not my question. My question is about the, in lieu of a traditional security deposit?
Yeah.
Which appears to provide a purchase order?
So we, we issue a purchase order for anything that we buy, and we would do a purchase order anyway for the lease payments of this that would be drawn on.
Okay.
So that provides the owner with that surety for the entire term of that lease, that that purchase order has already been issued, and that we will be drawing against that purchase order for the lease term.
That makes sense, thank you.
Sure.
It's just a promise to pay.
Yes.
So a safety question. Who's transporting the food back?
We have our maintenance food truck that you probably see on the highway everywhere that takes food, and now we no longer need that because we don't receive food that we store in the freezer at the maintenance site, but we still use that truck for lots of deliveries here, and that's why it was purchased originally. So it will be the truck that transports the food, and that's, that was the original design of that truck when we purchased it.
Okay. And lunch always brings up a bunch of different questions, so the menu will be, MHS will have their own until December.
Yes, yes.
Unlimited.
And it will be. But tasty.
Yes.
I'm sure.
Ryan will make sure of that.
Yes.
So pizza Friday.
Well, I know pepperoni Mondays. Pepperoni rolls on Monday. I do know that.
Building standards. Okay, anything else?
I'll be there Monday.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. City construction?
Yes, and again, we have a lot of things going on, and this recommendation is for city construction. This is something that they are already working on. This is the project that's been ongoing and broken into three phases now, I believe, but it is the sewage lines underneath Morgantown High, which we know is a very old building, and these repairs had to be made. So we have made adjustments in the phasing of the completion of this project, and again, this first phase is pretty straight line, but again, city construction did receive the bid for that, and they are currently, it's currently underway.
Took the big picture and shrunk it down into individual pieces.
Yes, absolutely, because it is a complicated project.
Right, and it'd probably get more complicated once they find...
It will, it will.
As you go into that building. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. FMS Construction, which is kind of the same at school.
So it is along the same thing. A lot of work at Morgantown High. Again, through SBA funding and our local funding, we are able to commence the cafeteria renovation, and this is the company that was the low bidder. It is not a company we've worked with before, but we did check references, and we're excited to have them come on board here because, again, this is a big project. Again, anytime you're renovating something instead of a new build, it is more complex, and they came prepared, and so we're excited to get this well underway. We're already moving and packing things so that this, I think, it's probably on here tonight, or I'm not sure, are the moving company. Did we already approve the moving company because it's central?
I think it's underneath our threshold.
Oh, so we didn't have to do that, yes, because we had to get a moving company to help move all the things at the school. Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? I kind of checked into this company a little bit. They have a great reputation for working on things while they're running.
Yeah.
They do a lot with, some understanding with grocery stores and things like that, and they don't have to shut down, so they've got a great reputation for that. So anybody else? No? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Morgantown Utility Board easement agreement.
And this was unexpected for us, but we did get phone calls here of urgency to, to access our property, the side of our field, I believe, at Morgantown High, because there were issues that MUB was having, and they needed access to our property to make a safe and healthy situation out of an issue that they were having, so I believe that's the background for this. This is, Jennifer, again, worked with this.
This was a temporary...
Yes.
I'll let you go.
Yes, this is a temporary six-month easement.
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Questions, follow-ups?
So within that six months, they're going to build something new on our property, fix their old things, and then remove it? Is that my understanding?
That's my understanding.
I had a, just a typo note or whatever, I think, and that it said six months ending January 3rd, '25, so it should be '26, correct?
Oh, it should, yes.
That's easily corrected. Okay, any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Yes, and again, this is a new contract here for software for us.
It is to digitize the IDEA records.
Yes, we are moving toward, as you can imagine, we have lots of paper records, and we have a huge room here for our records for special education, and it is overflowing. And again, as you know, most records now are digitized, and this will put us on the track to get that done and be able to access them immediately when they're needed, but we are, we do have to maintain them for many years. So that's, this company, it was the low bid to do that.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, any questions, follow-ups? And on that, it said this is not an invoice, so we're approving the bid, I guess.
So as part of the quote, a lot of times with software companies, they will have a hyperlink to their terms and conditions. So this is the order form, which is our quote, but then if you scroll down, you'll see all of the terms and conditions.
So that's all they're meaning is, we'll be low, and that's it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Accounts payable. And these two I will have to leave because I have a business relationship with this vendor, so I would ask our Vice President to cover for me.
Okay, so I am recommending that we, item A under accounts payable addendum, addendum A, that we approve that.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Not approved? There's one more.
There is one more.
Stay there.
Stay there, yes. So the next recommendation is addendum B under accounts payable, and I am recommending that the board approve that.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
You're now approved. Trying to sort of want it and knock on the wall.
I want to be gentle. I did it, I could beat it.
You did it.
When you knocked, I wondered, was that quick? Thank you, Jen. Okay, consider gentle.
So recommending expenditures exceeding $3,000. And under that, we start with the... And under that, we start with the accounts payable. That's item?
B.
B, yes.
I can read these for you.
I can read. And then item C is B and M Environmental. D is, do we have to take them one at a time?
No, we're going to do them all.
Curriculum Associates. E is with Epic, and that's our MOU for educationists. And then F is Epic, again, for the developmental evaluators. This is for our children qualifying at age three. And then, again, working with Epic for the bus operators training is G. H is Liberty Educational Consulting. I is with the Medicaid, and we work with Marion and Montague County for the same person. And then J is the welding. We work with students from Mountaineer Job Challenge Program to get welding training. K is Navigate 360, which is the software program that the schools use for their PBIS rewards. L is for Morgantown High. That's their postage machine with Pitney Bowls. M is Rebel Fast Pitch. N is Riverside Insights. O is Subtle and Stonaker for the GASP agreement. P are the minutes from the last meeting. Q is the Early Head Start Certification of Governance and Leadership Capacity Screening. R is the Head Start Certification of Governance and Leadership Capacity Screening. S is the Early Head Start Monthly Report for May. T, Head Start Monthly Report, again, for May. U, the Early Head Start PIR. V is the Head Start PIR.
That's it.
And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Any second. Any questions or?
I have a question. The Rebel Fast Pitch, where are those fields?
Westwood.
Over, behind Westwood, more or less.
Are they new?
No.
So they're the old Micholi?
Yes, exactly.
I didn't realize we owned those now.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we owned part of it before.
Well, we did, right.
Well, I didn't realize we had any control over them at some point in history.
Okay. And, and you're right, that did change. It was the Micholi fields, and I know Mike was on the board when that all transpired here. But yes, so.
I have a question about item A. Point three on that agenda is the approval of pre-K textbooks.
Yes.
Why do pre-kers need textbooks?
Well, it's not actually textbooks, so that's a good, another good question. This is a curriculum, so it should have probably spelled that out more. This is the new adoption. This was a year to adopt social studies and pre-K. And for stuff, no, we've been through the social studies adoption. This is the pre-K curriculum, so it is not textbooks. I assure you of that.
I read that, and I was like.
Yes. No, they do not, and we would not, that would not be a best practice.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yes.
Pre-K is pretty gifted here. Hey, I had a question about, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, I can't get my college students to read textbook with pre-K or sure.
I just had a question about the item D, Curriculum Associates. I mean, I'm up for there. What do we get for that?
Yes. And I need to look, I need to check what that is. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. There are a lot of items on this.
There is a lot here. Oh, thank you. That was my key word. Thank you. That is our ELL curriculum for English Language Learners.
Okay.
So that is, and we have done that for years, but I always do forget to what that is.
Well, there's a lot to know.
And it's through Curriculum Associates.
Okay, thank you.
There's also a number of playground equipment.
Yes.
What schools can be expecting from that?
Absolutely.
So for the first, number one is Eastwood, and then for number 11 is North.
Okay, great.
And they use their levy allocations to do this, which we have been fortunate enough to have. And as you well know, our playgrounds are stellar in this district, and our schools have done, and their parent groups have done wonderful jobs of selecting items. And we have a process to ensure that the items that are purchased are installed by qualified people from the company, and that they are also appropriate for what we're doing.
Anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. And here's where I'm going to put a plug in for our excess levy. As you mentioned, the playground equipment, excess levy funds, but we have 15 items on here. 10 of them are funded by the excess levy, so that just shows how vitally important it is for what we do.
Hundred percent.
So that's my commercial break.
So I know from this office, we are working, and Teresa, in particular, has compiled a list, and I know that'll be coming out to all of you. It's, it's a starter list. It may not be fully comprehensive, but we do have several names on it from schools and from community folks and from, and names that may have been recommended here. So we're excited about that, and I know that, I think I heard at the last meeting, we want to have this in place here, or at least the beginnings of it here in August, and certainly prior to school starting. So it is moving along quite well, and that's what I know from this office.
So that was our excess levy update.
It has been mentioned multiple times, and I even, Mr. King in the music programs.
Exactly. Okay. Board member updates. Anybody have updates?
I know nothing but rave reviews on Summer Avalanche and how great that's going.
I have a few updates that I'd like to share that I've been hearing from different parents. We talked at our last meeting about pushing our discussion on crowdsourcing and fundraising. I'd like to add that to the August 12th agenda. I also have received a number of different issues, and I wouldn't say complaints, but concerns about bus safety on different streets as well as in different neighborhoods. I'd like to invite Mr. Harrison to give us a discussion about bus safety and how he and his office respond to parent concerns, because a lot of times I'm hearing from parents that they're not getting responses or the response that they're looking for. So I'd like to hear from him about that, because, like I said, I've been contacted by a number of parents who are very concerned going into the school year. So, but yay, Summer Avalanche as well.
It is going good. And we attended a Morgantown High football, had a little fundraiser the other day, really, really impressive with the amount of support coming out of there. But there are a lot of questions about the excess levy coming up, so just continue to look at the great things that Nicole put together for us to stay educated on that, and just keeping everyone aware of what's going on. Back to Dr. Morgan's point about being responsive to the parents, you know, I'm sure that's always been around. Everyone wants to hear something right away, and it's, it's difficult. But I have heard a few different times here and there, I can't get a hold of anybody, I can't get a hold of anybody. So any, any way I can help or anyone can help, especially now is a crucial time to be answering questions and getting back to people, so.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm going to indulge a little bit here off the cuff. Over the last 20 years, as Donna can attest to, I rarely miss a meeting, and I've been here on my wedding anniversary several times over the years. So on July 12th, my wife and I celebrated our 50th wedding anniversary, and I want to publicly thank her for putting up with me, and she has never complained.
To your face.
Yeah, my face. But I do, I want to publicly thank her for allowing me to do what we do, so I thank you for allowing me, you didn't allow me, but I did it anyway this time to, that's my board member update, so. Okay, I'll get back to the business here.
So next item is policy review, and that's Jennifer.
So I finally got all of the policies back. They are all in. By tomorrow, they will be in your library for your review. We will have them on the August 12th meeting for first reading. It's not as many as the last one.
She said that every time.
No, I promise it really isn't.
What meeting is that again? You're going to be out of town there.
Okay. Anybody have any comments about the policies? No? Okay. Personnel matters. First one's personnel list.
Yes. And so I am recommending that the personnel list be approved as stated.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Top second.
Second.
I do have a question. And this is another just new board member trying to figure his way out in life. It might be for Bob, but I had a lady the other night that said, hey, I got approved to be a new blah 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 teacher, and I'm excited. And I was like, oh, neat. And I look on, I don't see, I don't see their names. So when do they get on to, like, say they got hired last Wednesday, when do they make it on to the list for us to approve? Is that a?
They, they have a number of things they need to turn in, and normally the holdup, they need a background check, and sometimes it takes maybe up to two weeks for that to get back to us. So that's the normal.
That's probably the last thing they hold on.
Yes.
Okay.
And when you think about that, that's pretty quick for a background check when you get, because they're going to put them with kids. And that's pretty impressive, in my opinion, but anyway.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm just amazed, I mean, it's amazing.
I was looking more for like 24 hours.
Well, I deal with it. Commercial drivers likes to decide, I hope, and it sometimes takes. But they're saying, here's an, here's an individual that's good to go and be with your kids. So I think it's, it's hard to follow somebody that long. Anybody else? How about I go off?
Well, it's, the principal does make the recommendation, so I see where that is, but there's, there are several steps that have to occur because, before they can come in front of the board.
I just thought, usually that would, that would happen, and then they recommend them. But I was just wondering how it works.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. New positions.
Yes, and I do have a new position that we are requesting. After reviewing staffing, we are requesting for Mountain View a halftime special ed aide. So I think there is a bit of a clarification on that. It says halftime, but then it says plus one. It should be plus point five.
Plus point five, yes. And that is an enrollment increase?
It's a student need.
Need.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Personnel list addendum.
Yes, and so we do have an addendum. Again, as you can imagine, this is hiring season, so the addendum, we are recommending that this addendum be approved. We're trying to get everyone in place. Now, just for your information as well, we are, this is basically our hold in place, so folks hired after this week will be held in place for their current positions so that the schools can get their folks settled and moving forward. But tonight, recommending the personnel addendum be approved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments?
What is that official hold in place date? July 30th?
Well, it's actually this evening, but we do give, and we've announced that to our schools. But the superintendent does have latitude, and I have already conveyed to our schools, because they're trying to get some things done this week, and so they have names, we're going to let those go through and bring those to you. But then, after that, it will be case by case, very special circumstances, because we don't disrupt. It does seem early, but indeed, you know.
They need to know.
I feel like we should be able to do it all the way up to like right before school starts.
Well, we can hire new people, but we don't, we don't want to pull out a person from where they're scheduled to teach second grade or whatever it is.
And it's also by code.
Oh, wow.
Is there a date in code?
I think it's 20 days prior to the first day of school.
Yes.
Yeah. But we've always done, historically, this board has always done the second board meeting in July is the hold in place date.
Because the cards will be going out for this going to be your teacher, or that might already happen.
Well, some of it has, but not all of it. A lot of the schools send those out, and then, you know, it's a disappointment if then that teacher isn't there to start the year. So there's lots of reasons for it. But that's what we traditionally do.
Anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. And before I adjourn, I want to thank our Deputy Superintendent, because Dr. Campbell has been on a well-deserved vacation for the last couple meetings, and supposedly he's going to be back for the national, unless he dislikes us that much and doesn't come back. But I do want to thank you publicly, and thanks for filling in. So with that.
Lots of help. Thank you.
We stay in the journey.
Thank you.
Good job. All right. Good call.